Please rise for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Attendance, please.
President Schaefer?
Here.
Vice President Dr. Reese?
Here.
Secretary Summers here. Treasury Hanson?
Present.
Trustee McDonough?
Yes.
Trustee Schultz?
Yes.
Trustee Whitney, here. All present.
Okay, full house. Changes to the board agenda? No?
No.
Is there any scheduled public comment for the agenda? No? It's not that I know of. Moving right along. The consent agenda? Recommendation for that? Anybody want to read it? Committee, you want to read it?
Sure.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented. Support? James? Discussion on the app? Anyone? Minutes? No? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. The superintendent's report, please.
Okay. Thank you. There. How did you read my mind now? The agenda. Let me do a little intro and then you can take over, okay? So, toward the beginning of the year, the board asked us to review just exactly how communications came into us and how communications flowed from us when we got tips from various sources. Sometimes we get tips from people who are concerned about a behavior that they think might be a threat and it comes to us directly during the school day. Sometimes we get tips and they come directly to us after the school day is all over. Sometimes the tips go through OK to Say. And sometimes when they go to OK to Say, they actually reference the school. So, OK to Say sends them to us. Sometimes those tips do not reference the school at all and those tips go to the police, not necessarily to us. Sometimes people have called 911 and the same thing happens. If the school is referenced, 911 will call us. If the school is not referenced, it goes directly to the police. So, we wrote, we met with our district safety committee. We reviewed our communications. We talked to the sheriff's department, our local police. Allison talked to the OK to Say people at the state level to say, how can we be real clear with what happens when a tip comes in? And we wrote many, many pages of many, many paragraphs to try to explain it all. And then we came up with a picture that I think is, will be clearer to everyone. And Allison's going to go over that picture with you today. The other thing you have in front of you is the OK to Say FAQ, which is linked to our website, which also people can, 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 there are sometimes snags with it. And we're working with OK to Say to work out those snags. The snags aren't that the tips don't get responded to. They always get responded to. But we're never sure which of the people on our call list are going to be called at any given time. So internally, we've made sure that if one person gets called, that person calls everybody else who's involved, trying to cover ourselves until we can work this out with OK to Say. But other than that one glitch, I think we have it worked out. The sheriff's department has thought this was exactly how it all works. And so Allison, I now turn it over to you.
Okay, so, and when a tip is received during the school day, it's reported to the administration. Or if it goes to a teacher, then the teacher then reports it to administration. The team, we have a screener team who reviews to determine whether or not a threat assessment screener is needed. And then the threat assessment process begins, starting with a screener. That is with a minimum of your, a school administrator, your SRO, and a school-based mental health professional on that team. We do include other people as needed, but that is your minimum core team. And then during the screening, if it's assessed that no threat is needed at that time, we've adapted our screener to add some other components, such as why, what are their consequences? And then it's, the incident is managed following the code of conduct, if applicable. So when that comes in, we start with, is it concerning behavior? Is it threatening behavior? Before we even go through our screener process. Then if it goes from a screener to a full threat assessment process, it can be deemed as a non-credible, which means there is no, means, method, opportunity, or proximity. Doesn't mean that it's not a low level. It just means it's not a high or an imminent. And then that is, there's various ways. So in that little box, we can only put so many things. But that's two of many things that could occur. We, we could have a safety plan. There could be code of conduct. There could be a third-party evaluation. There could, I could keep going on with what could be. If it is deemed a credible threat, that is when we would definitely engage with law enforcement. Could be, we turn that over and it becomes a police investigation. There could be closures of an event of the school day, adding security, removing the student. And then using, within the police investigation, what we need to apply with our code of conduct as well. After school hours, it's, there's a lot, as you can see. So after school hours, if it's return, if it's reported to the administration, we slide back over to the left and we start that process. There is a team that would review it to at least do that pre-screening point and assemble that multidisciplinary team. If it goes OK to Say, OK to Say is a confidential tip line. If you feel you're in immediate danger, if you are aware of an imminent threat, please call 911. OK to Say is a confidential tip line that's filtered through the Michigan State Police. So the Michigan State Police then looks at the tip and would route it to the school if it's a school-based incident or something that could impact any of our properties. And that could also lead to a possible police investigation. And then we go over to the left where that threat assessment process would be viewed for the screener. If it is outside of school, it does not reference Oxford Community Schools in any way, shape, or form, that is a police investigation. So that, it does not go back to us. If someone was to call the non-emergency police dispatch, and we've included that on our flow chart, the incident is reported to the school if the school is referenced. If there is some sort of threat or the means, method, opportunity, proximity is school-based, then it would begin, it would be brought to our attention as well as a possible police report. If it is outside of Oxford Community Schools and our property, then it would be a police investigation only. And then finally, if it's an emergency imminent situation and you have called 911, same thing. We would be notified if it is a school-based concern. If it's something that would impact the school day. And then again, we would go to that left side where we would, where we would screen it if it was a threat. And then if it is nothing that references the school or, in a whole, any building, any property, any specific students on school property, then that is considered a police issue and it would be under police investigation. And those are times that we are unable to provide any information dependent on the police investigation and what the police then gives us as a press release to release out to the community.
I want to just emphasize that last point just a little bit more. Because a lot of times when people hear things happen in the community and they want the school to be able to tell them more about what happens in the community. If it's one of those events that does not reference the school, we frequently don't have any information. We are not involved in the investigation. We have no jurisdiction to apply any consequences or take any action. And the police, for very good reason, restrict anything we can say. Because if it's an ongoing investigation for them and we were to let information out, it could interfere with their case. It could interfere with eventual adjudication. And so they have very good reasons for why they say there are certain things the police need to know that the public are not going to get to know necessarily until the case is ready for that. So I know that there are times when our, especially our parent population might get frustrated about that, but that is what it is. We had a very long discussion with that, with the district safety committee and all of the law enforcement representatives that sit on that committee. And there's really very good reason. We all know of the case where the perpetrator was found in Maryland and that perpetrator is now being charged in there. You know, had we let, had the police told us what was happening and had we inadvertently let that information out, who knows if they would have ever caught that person? Because if that information had gotten back to that person that they were a suspect of some sort, it's possible that that person would have been able to evade whatever was happening. So the police have very good reasons to say, this is our case and it's got to stay our case until we resolve the case. I just wanted to emphasize that.
And I think that, that Maryland situation is a perfect example of the talent of our SROs. Because that was Deputy Justin Barnes that led that investigation and was able to coordinate with various agencies. It wasn't just talking to Oakland County sheriffs. It wasn't just simply Maryland, police in Maryland, like the FBI. Like it was wonderful police work that he was able to do. And so it was because we, we weren't intruding. We were allowing him to do his job. And because of that, we were able to find out who that person, that person was able to be charged. We don't know because of the laws in Maryland. But because of his excellent police work, we were able to figure that out.
Okay. Did you, now this is kind of the, something the board had asked us to do. Did you have any other questions or?
I think, well, I already know the answer, but I just want to have it said again out loud. When we're talking about the, it is. Okay. Sorry about that. So when we're talking about where the threat assessment process begins?
Yes.
The orange square?
Yes.
Everybody involved in that is BTAM-trained?
Yes. Correct?
And moving on from that, we now have Navigate 360 in place for the threat assessment. So there are fail safes already in that does not allow them to move forward without asking certain questions. For instance, does this person have access to weapons?
Right. There's four different spots set up within that program. And you aren't able to move on. In addition, there's also tags that they have to tag different things in on the screener itself, which is a paper-based document. We do have a question about that in our checklist, which I go back and check on people. It is asking whether or not the SRO was contacted and they have to fill out the access to lethal weapons. Perfect. Thank you.
More of a point of emphasis, I mean, you touched on the OK to Say, but a couple of things with that, because we talked about this in committee quite a bit, was it is a Michigan State program. And I don't think it needs to be added to the flow chart, but there's also a large percentage of calls that are filtered out completely.
Yes. And we have no control over that.
And we don't have any control over that. That is, that is Michigan State's OK to Say department or whatever. And it's whatever training they've gotten that they can understand how to analyze and then how to disseminate that information to the correct, or correct authorities, I guess.
Yes. And so that would lead to further, if anyone knows of anything, please, as much as you can. If you're not comfortable contacting the district, there's the dispatch number. There's the 911. Because that will make sure people here in our area are able to address it.
And to Vicki's point earlier, she mentioned that not always, like you guys are all on the same page as far as if we do get an OK to Say. But who, OK to Say, they have in contact?
Yes.
But who actually gets the call is not always?
Correct.
The same. And again, that would be on OK to Say. We have, my understanding is, we kind of tried to work with them, but we can't, we don't have any authority over them by any means.
Correct.
And we can kind of, we can say, these are the three people. Please let them all know, or whatever. These are the people. But if they only call one of them, then that's, we have to do our due diligence on our side to make sure that our team is aware.
Yes. And internally, we have set that communication even between the police agencies.
When you say school is referenced, does that mean a student of the school is referenced? Just the physical property of the school?
If a student is intending to cause harm on our property. Like if a student is intent to cause harm at McDonald's, that's not one we would get. That's one the police would get. But if a student is intent on coming to the draina road property, that's when we would get the notification.
And then just a plug for OK to Say in October next week, right? For the speaker for Parent University?
Yes. October 2nd, we will have Dr. Melissa Reeves here as part of Parent University. Who will give, and actually I met with her today. And I have the slides got emailed to me while I was standing up here. She'll do a, basically a parent threat assessment 101-type presentation with some time for some questions. And then we'll also have Don Ferguson from OK to Say here to give a presentation on OK to Say. And that's at 6 o'clock at the middle school. October 2nd.
Say that again out loud. October 2nd?
October 2nd at 6:00 PM in the commons area. It'll be Dr. Melissa Reeves. She will be giving a threat assessment 101 basics for the community and for parents. And then we'll have Don Ferguson from OK to Say coming to give a presentation on OK to Say.
Are we asking folks to preregister?
Yes.
They have to, yeah.
Yes.
Yep. They're supposed to.
And you can go to Oxfordschools.org website and you can register there.
Dr. Reeves is the person who grounded all of the training that we've been doing here. And she did a lot of the training herself and then did the trainer of trainers of the people who will be carrying on the training. So if parents have any questions about our process, our procedures, how they stack up against, she's the good person to come in here.
She's also one of the authors of the Prepare Model, which was adopted by Oakland Schools and what we use as part of our emergency operations plan.
She's like renowned in the world of threat assessment. If you start looking into it and you start reading up on it, she's the, she's the Yoda.
Yes.
You know?
We were lucky to get her.
Yeah. So for people, you know, inquiring and criticizing that we aren't doing threat assessment, that we don't have the processes, that we aren't putting the work in. But you're listening, yours on.
Dr. Reeves has trained me even when I was in Texas on this. So she's countrywide. She partners with, she's one of the advisors for Safe and Sound Schools as well.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My next report is very exciting. In fact, if you recall at the last meeting, I tried to get this to you even then. I was so excited about it. It is the Talent Together. And we are, I think, the biggest user in Oakland County. This is what I heard by all, from all the other superintendents. And so Ryan, we'll let you know more about this.
Yes, well, good evening, everyone. It is my honor to be here tonight to present to you about Talent Together. I have a couple of slides put together to explain to you. So Talent Together is an innovative partnership between the Michigan Department of Education, nine-approved educator prep programs, and 48 ISDs and local districts like Oxford. This program was funded directly through the legislature this July. And Talent Together received $67 million in funding to run this program. It aims to address the statewide teacher shortage and create a sustainable pipeline of educators. And what's so unique about the program is the multiple pathways that are offered depending on where people are and their current educational journey. And it is also designed for school employees, also subs. And then the community is also invited to apply priority. It kind of goes, employees of the district, subs, and then community members are also welcome to apply. There's no cost to participate in the program. Folks are matched with one of the nine educator prep programs throughout the state. It is set up to be convenient for working adults. So hearing all of this this spring, I knew that this was a program we had to get in on the ground floor with. It creates career growth opportunities for our staff. That's very valuable to folks in today's labor market. They want to have opportunity for advancement. And recruitment, retention are always one of our strategic goals in human resources. And we're able to do this with the funding through the legislature. So it's costing us nothing, which is amazing. And as Vicki mentioned, we have the most participants in Oakland County. And when I spoke to the statewide director, he told me that we might have the most in the state. So I'm super proud of that. We have 28 people participating in the first cohort of Talent Together. So Talent Together is designed to remove barriers. As I talked about, it's designed for working adults. The coursework is online with the prep programs. Financially, there's no cost to folks. It will cover the cost of their MTTC testing, any test prep that they need. And there's guidance and support provided by the program for our staff. So here is an example of a few pathways depending on your current role within the district and certification options. Elementary, I'm going to tell you all of the endorsement areas that the program offers. So you can do elementary education, early childhood education, English as a second language, special education with endorsements in autism, cognitive impairment, emotional impairment, learning disabilities, and then secondary math and secondary integrated sciences. Upon completion of the program, staff, they have priority placement here in Oxford, in Oxford or one of the other 48 agencies throughout the state. That's a priority placement for them. And we commit on both sides to five years. So that, we commit to employing them for five years and they commit to us to being here for at least five years upon completion of the program. Here are the ed prep partners throughout the state. Again, $67 million in funding. This is a statewide initiative. So not only is it helping Oxford Community Schools, it's helping the profession in Michigan, which is fantastic. With that funding, I would like to mention too, it offers stipends for our teacher leader roles within the district. So the mentors are also provided a stipend for their time and their mentorship of future teachers. So here's a quick timeline regarding Talent Together and the flyer that we put together that was emailed to all staff back in May. I had an overwhelming response to the flyer. Lots of people, it's been their dream or their goal to become a teacher or do more than their current role. So it was really wonderful to hear about folks' inspiration or, you know, the reasons why they wanted to come into education. Talent Together collected all the applications ultimately and selected participants. In July, it was funded. And in August 2023, we were approved as a registered apprenticeship program. And that's through the state and the U.S. Department of Labor. So it's really such a fantastic pipeline that they're building funding, not just through the state, but through the federal government. And what's so unique about, as you're probably aware, apprenticeship programs, people are earning a living wage while they're having on-the-job training for their next career. So it's such a wonderful opportunity for our staff. Here is a snapshot of our apprentice teams. We have five apprentices of our 28 folks. There are a couple of pictures there of apprentices in action. And we have Emily Brown, Kinsey Harvey, Jill Murray, Amy Orlando, and Colleen Roush-Rutan. They are paid 80% of the district's starting teacher salary. That is the formula statewide for all teacher apprentices. They have a full benefits package, including health, medical, dental, vision, life insurance, long-term disability, and paid time off. All of that will be reimbursed by Talent Together. And their mentors will be paid $7,500 this year for their role as a mentor teacher. So we're growing the profession and we're able to lean into our experts in the buildings who can train our next educators. I also want to recognize the other 23 participants in Talent Together. I don't have all their names to read to you, but here's a visual representation of what they are planning to study. Early childhood education, elementary, special ed. Look at those numbers. That's incredible, incredible. There's such a shortage and a need for educators in special education. What's also unique about the program is that it's, it's open to our current educators. So if we have educators who are in elementary ed or another subject area and they want to add special ed, they can do that through this program for free. And we do have, we have staff of all levels. We have secretaries, paraprofessionals, current teachers, and our 28 folks. It's a vast, there's a vast melting pot of different folks in that program. So it's not only for people who want to be educators. It's for our educators who want to grow in another endorsement area as well. So it's just a wonderful program and we are very fortunate to be part of it. So if you'd like to know more, I'm happy to take questions. You can visit their website. Anybody listening, if they're interested, feel free to reach out because we can keep on having the most mistake if we want to. Any questions? Yes.
What, you said it at the beginning. What's the commitment so that if we take somebody on?
Yes. Five years.
Okay. Then they commit to work for Oxford for five years?
Yes.
It's a great deal for us.
Yes. It is.
Go ahead, that's okay.
This is Reed. Thank you so much for this presentation. I'm so excited. And it's great to see that so many people in our district want to stay here and want to do more. And this is fantastic. I was really excited when we were first talking about this. And I'm, I'm interested to hear more, you know, as time goes on.
Absolutely.
I, we, I think a couple of us will be traveling to Washington also in January. And maybe we can get some updates before then to, as some of this is federally funded, I'd like to talk with our legislators there too, just to remind them. Assuming that it's going to continue, you know, to go really well. Just to let them know, you know, what an impact it's having here in Oxford. So thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
And I'm really excited. Thanks for finding us.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. Next up is, we're going to talk about, we're going to go into our Board of Education matters. I'd like to ask Jim to come up a little. Do you mind? Okay. The OHS band field trip request, just because there was a couple of questions. If you just want to clarify anything and just kind of?
It's band and orchestra.
Band and orchestra, yep.
I'll clarify that.
Big Walt Disney trip.
Yeah. And actually, there's a few people in the room who've either been with us or their kids have been with us. So. And it's basically, it's a repeat. This is the seventh time I've taken the band. The 14th time I've traveled with the band. We alternate between New York and Disney. And I know there was a question about bids. I did not, the last time we went, we did the Florida trip, we solicited bids. And World Strides, which at that time was Bright Spark. World Strides, the Bright Spark won the bid pretty handily, once you broke the bid down. And so because the price came in at really below what I thought inflation should be, based on the price that we had four years ago, I felt, and after talking to my booster excited for it, that probably didn't need, I think, because of policy, we didn't need to because it was a recurring trip, do the three bids.
Yep. And I think that the service that World Strides has offered our students.
It's, for me, it's not what, how a trip goes when it goes great. It's what happens when a trip goes off the rails. And we've had that. We were stranded in the Hudson River when the Statue of Liberty had a bomb threat. And we had bedbugs at a hotel in Disney. And so we've had our fair share of, I think Kit may have been with us on one of those. We've had our fair share of, when you take 150, 170 kids someplace, you're going to have issues. And to me, it's how a company handles the issue, not the great stuff. And World Strides and our tour consultant that we work with there, I've been working with him for 26 years. I trust them with my own kids when they go on the trip, so.
Okay. Go ahead, Mary.
So maybe all those bright star bags will now be collectibles? All those orange bags?
Yeah.
They have in the closet?
I got a couple of those.
I think World Strides are blue.
All right. Well, that's better for Oxford. I, I did not go to Disney, but I went with my daughter on the New York trip. My daughter had gone on the Disney trip when she was in band. And it was, everything seemed so smooth because of the work that Jim and his team put into this. And it's hard to look at an organization who's going to plan something like this and entertain 150 kids, often breaking them up into two groups because you can't have that many people going one place at one time and this and that. So it was, the trips have been great for us because the people that are running them know what they're doing. And Jim's told us some of these stories before of things that have gone wrong. So it's been really helpful to have your experience.
I don't want to lead with that.
Well, the reality is, but I mean, that's what we're concerned about, right? I mean, it's great when everything goes well. But everything also, I think, goes well because you have the experience and they have the experience.
Yeah. The last trip to Disney was, I think, the first trip that any school group took any place post-COVID. And so World Strides was, you know, they, like, sweating bullets to make that trip go off without somebody getting a test for, you know, positive COVID test as we were getting ready to go. getting ready to go. And it's like the disaster that would happen. And World Strides was just great in, in helping us facilitate all of the stuff that we needed to do, so. I'm looking forward to not having to do COVID tests before we get on the airplane.
Awesome. Well, thanks so much. Anybody else, any questions for Jim while he's here? Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I'm leaving. I have to go to the high school for my daughters.
Yes, it's all right. That's okay. Thanks for coming.
Didn't you want you to think I was rude?
Never, Jim. So there's our, there's our OHS band field trip. Then we've got the OHS the Fall Play Field Trip Request as well with Mrs. Price and the 2023 M A S B Leadership Conference. The gals are going on. So moving on to B. Go ahead.
Hi. I'm Krista Price and I'm the Director of the Theater Program, for those of you who might not have met me before. And this is John Schmidt, and he helps run the facility at the high school for the, for the theater. So he's here with me because he.
So if we lived under a rock and we didn't go to Little Mermaid?
Thank you, yes. And thank you for all of your support with that. We're really proud of what we're able to do at Oxford High School and all the support we get from, from all of you. So thank you. So I'm here to present a possible opportunity for a fall play retreat for the participants in our fall play. The purpose for this, or kind of the reason for it, our fall play is just as important as our musical. It's a little bit smaller. It's not as many people involved. It's a smaller team and often a smaller cast, but it's still a keystone event in our community. However, in the fall, it's become an extremely tight schedule. We're just really pushed in at all sides. So where we don't have time, we're trying to create time, more time for our students to get done what we need to for a high school production, which requires a lot, as I'm sure you probably can imagine. So the rehearsal retreat would be utilized as an event where we could do a lot of team building, but also, very importantly, much-needed rehearsal time with our cast as well. So that would be the purpose. That's why we want to do that this year. I've done retreats like this in the past at other schools, never here at Oxford High School, actually, I think maybe my first year here. But because we are so tight with our schedule this year, that is kind of the purpose we're looking at. So our goals for it, for this trip would be to participate in team building, like I mentioned, and cast in character or show-related exercise, exercises designed to create a cohesive cast for our ensemble-driven fall play. I hope you all come to the fall play. It's very ensemble-driven. Every actor is on stage almost the entire time and it's just, you have to have a really cohesive team to pull that off. Number two, to provide the cast and show with dedicated and intense supplemental rehearsal time. Like I said, due to the number of scheduled interruptions this fall, as well as our shortened run, we're, we're having to produce this a week earlier than normal, and also some lost tech rehearsals. So normally, we have a full week of tech, which is so important for student actors and, and artists, especially first timers. But we, we are down to effectively two tech rehearsals that week instead of our normal five. So we just really are trying to create time to, to help these kids. And then the last goal is to provide a distraction-free out-of-school setting in which students can fully commit to self-growth, team cohesion, and rehearsal and show excellence. So if you've seen our shows, I think you know we take very seriously growing students and balancing that with excellence as well, so they can be truly proud of what they create. So as far as staff and students, we have 15 cast members in the show and two stage managers that would be going, that would participate. There's five of those students who are also in marching band that have a marching band competition on that Saturday. So we have a chaperone that's volunteered to hold back and bring those, those students up the next day so that they can participate in both things and we can still have them as part of our cast and do the important work that we need. We have eight adults, so quite a few great chaperones that have committed to this weekend if approved. And our transportation would be chaperone-driven vehicles and one of those being a 15-passenger van that we plan to rent as well, so that they can kind of be together as part of that process. So that would be the staff and students and transportation. As far as location and cost, so the facility is in Irons, Michigan. It is a donated facility use. There are six cabins and a lodge on the property. And the lodge would be great to utilize for our gathering time, our meals time, but also our rehearsal time as well. Across per student, we're trying to keep really low, which would partially cover our food and transportation costs. And if a student couldn't afford it, the theater program would definitely step up and help cover that. So we do have scholarships available if students can't afford that. And then the dates would be October 20th through 23rd, literally the only dates available to us with our busy fall season, with, with other things that are going on at Oxford High School. We would leave at the end of the day on Friday and return on Monday, which is outside of our count week, which I know is very important. And then if you don't know the show that we're producing this fall, we're really excited about it. This is our first full-length fall play since before pandemic. So we're talking, go all the way back to 2019. Since then, we have scaled back until this year. We have scaled back because of wanting to keep the intensity low and, and make sure that we, we aren't biting off more than we can chew, both for, for, you know, our venue, the kids' time, and also their mental and emotional well-being. But this is our first full-length. We're excited to be able to tackle this. The show is Peter and the Star Catcher. If you don't know anything about it, look it up if you have a chance because it's just a really lovely, fun, ensemble-driven show that is silly, but has a lot of heart and extremely creative in the way that it is staged. So we're excited about that. If you don't know anything about it, I can at least tell you that it's the prequel to Peter Pan. So kind of like what Wicked is to Wizard of Oz, that, that's kind of what this is to Peter Pan. It's very imaginative, like I said. And our show dates are November 9th through 11th, and we have four shows total. So that's a little bit about our show as well. I'm happy to take any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Krista. Questions or comments?
Yeah. Krista, I have just a couple of questions.
Okay.
So how did you find this place where you're staying?
So, so it's a donated, donated space and I can share more with you about that if you, if you choose, but yeah.
All right. And you do such a great job with the kids and the productions. So I think this is a fun opportunity for them.
Thanks.
Glad, Mary.
I'm full of comments today. Ms. Price, thank you so much. You know, the arts are such an important part of everything that we do here and I just so look forward to the place. Thank you. Thank you so much. And I wrote it down in really big letters, so I'm sure the date, the dates of the show is on my calendar. I, I appreciate that you were, you know, you're thinking of a way to still get this done because I, you know, I know how, just playing, being in a couple of activities is, there were a couple of years my daughter wanted to work on the fall play, but with marching band and robotics, she couldn't.
Right.
But it did. And so I appreciate that you're taking the time, you know, you and your team, to find ways that we can still get this done, even as busy as all of our kids are, and get a little break, you know, getting away from here. It's always nice to get a little break. So thank you very much for your efforts on this. Thank you.
I appreciate you acknowledging that. Thank you.
Anything else?
I just have a question. So looking at the dates of the retreat and then when our next meeting occurs, I guess it's kind of a tight turnaround.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, we didn't have the show cast. Like, these are the only two meetings that we could come to based on when we had to cast our show, so.
Right. So I guess if this, my, my proposition, knowing that, because of being a planner myself as a mother, I think I would make a motion in this meeting if I could potentially get the support. I don't think that I saw many questions come up out of it, so. See head shakings. Okay, I'll go with that then. All right. What are the dates again? Tell me, so I read them out loud.
November, oh, oh, the retreat, October 20th to the 23rd, 2023.
Got it. All right. So I will move to approve the OHS Fall Play Field Trip Request for October 20th to 23rd,
Support, everybody? Okay, James, I saw your hand first. We'll put James down for the record. Discussion, I think we've already had a discussion with the presentation. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Your support means a lot. Thank you so much.
Do not miss the play, people.
Thank you.
I do not miss them.
Thank you, Jen.
Go to the play. Okay. And our next one is the 2023 M A S B Annual Leadership Conference. Certainly. Move to appoint Dr. Erin Reese as an alternate delegate to the 2023 Delegate Assembly to be held November 9th, 2023 at the M A S B Annual Leadership Conference. Support? Colleen?
Support.
It's the same weekend as the play. I just realized that. Okay. Discussion? No? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Well, that's a bummer that it's the same weekend, but maybe there'll be a late Sunday.
I'll have to give it to you something.
We'll look at the times.
Thank you.
Thank you for going. Next one, we're going to, Item D, Superintendent Search Discussion. So I kind of wanted to bring this up and a couple of other people mentioned it as well. So as we know, Dr. Markovich has given us, well, she gave us a little bit of time, then we squeezed a little bit more out of time. I, you know, I don't know how much more squeezing we can do, but, so we're going to have to look into our calendars and start opening, opening some time up for our superintendent search, which most of this board has not done. A couple of us have done before. So it's time-consuming and we need to be, stay organized and, and obviously have some support in that. Kind of how it went last time is we, Tom actually asked me to do it, just out of background convenience. I had a recruiting background, so I went and found companies. They kind of gave us a bid, if you will. They gave us a proposal of their services. One was M A S B, the Michigan Association of School Boards, and one was the Michigan Leadership Institute, MLI, both highly qualified to do that type of stuff. There's other companies too. Those are the only companies that I reached out to at the time. And, and they gave us both pretty similar service requests. And so we looked over those and we chose MLI and then we kind of started that process. So there's a bit of work even up into that process. And so that's kind of where we started with this. So Vicky kind of put this together a little bit, kind of found this for us and put it together. You want to make some comments on that or?
No, I just, this is a very typical template for a request for proposals that you would post as an RFP. And you could also send to firms that you knew of to make sure that they were aware of it. And then the firms meet your, the requirements that you have placed in here as they bring you their, their proposals. The most important sections about this, and, and you can read it and change it and add to it and delete from it, it's just a template. But the description of the Oxford Community Schools is a very important part that needs to be written fully and carefully so that people have a good picture of, of where they're coming. That's on the first page. And then on the very last page, the other very important thing to review are the dates. And I have put dates in here. That's a pretty aggressive timeline, but I kind of backward, backward mapped, thinking if you want to get your, if you want to start getting applications in, get the posting out in February.
We don't have one.
You don't have one?
They have one. It wasn't a board practice.
It wasn't a board practice. Just take mine. Yep, just take mine and share it with Colleen. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Anyway, on that, on that last page, our dates. And, you know, spring season for getting superintendents gets pretty heavy in March and April, and I thought you might want to be first out on the market maybe by February so that you could aggressively market February, March, start interviewing March, April, and kind of get maybe ahead of, of the vast majority of people in the market. And so using that, these are the dates you probably have to comply with in order to get a firm on board. You'll have a lot of meetings with your community. You'll have a lot of meetings with staff. You'll have a lot of meetings with yourself in order to get your profile of what you're looking for in a superintendent down pat. And then you'll want them to aggressively market that. So the dates are something you probably have to pay attention to and the description of the district. And of course, Danny and I stand ready to help you with that description when you're ready.
I think I just want to add comments too. From an RFP standpoint, I know we have two local firms, but I wouldn't be opposed to sending them to national firms. In the state of Michigan alone, there's nine superintendent searches that are occurring across our state. It's a significant volume of leadership attrition in public schools for a variety of reasons. I believe we have to have a very intentional search. And so the earlier we start, the more feedback we can get in order to meet the needs that our district has, which are unique comparative to the other eight districts. They all have their needs, but ours are very unique and we need to be intentional about how we select somebody. So I'm supportive editing. So maybe the walk away from this is for all of us to take a peek, edit anything we want, send it to, are we going to have a subcommittee or what's the ask out of this other than?
So I would at this point probably have everybody send their edits to me and then I'll go from there.
I don't think that's, this, I mean, we're just, we're talking about the RFP. This is not a contract. This is not anything binding. This is just what we want to put out to find a firm. I do want to reiterate what Vicky was saying about the planning that goes into this process before we even put out post-the-job. There's a lot of work to be done beforehand. So just so the board all knows too, that is most likely going to mean extra board hours coming up. It's going to be more than just twice a month.
Right.
Once we get this firm hired, because we are going to be creating that profile. The search firm also does a lot of work gathering input from the community and whatnot. But I just want to be sure that we're prepared also, that there might be more time. And I, and I definitely don't want to wait. I think that by the next meeting, even before my last page didn't print properly, I don't know if we need it before the next meeting, but again, this is a, this is an RFP, so it's not any kind of binding contract. It's just what, you know, it's just us announcing that we're looking for somebody.
Right.
Yeah, I, I actually indicated that, that by the 11th and no later, you would be ready to put the RFP out. Because as you said, this is, this is the RFP. This is not the superintendent document itself. And the sooner you get it out, the sooner you get it back and, and then hopefully you would be able to select the firm. I believe I have the beginning of November, the first board meeting in November. You would be able to select the firm. And then, once you select the firm, then it really starts going heavy. In my, in my experience, and I did a little bit of superintendent searching before I came to work for you all when I did some consulting. And, and so I, because it is a lot of work, it, there are typically a board subcommittee. I mean, there's a lot of work the board as a whole has to do, but there's a lot of work in between those board meetings. So if you have a subcommittee of, of two or three people to help get that work done, it, it really makes the process go a little smoother. And it doesn't have to be done tonight, but at some point in time, you might want to think about that.
Maybe there would be something for us to talk about.
Well, why don't we do a takeaway as, take some time to review this. Send me any edits, like something that you, needs to be omitted or deleted or changed. And then also, if you'd like to be on the committee, because it is going to be a commitment of time and I don't want to make assumptions and ask somebody and put them on the spot. So think about your time and whether or not you can commit to that and let me know. And we'll, three, two to three people on the committee, so. And, and I won't be one of them, so it'll be two or three of you. Because I'll have, I'll have a different role once it gets started, once it gets rolling. So I won't have a role in this. So it'll be two or three of you and you guys, you know, you guys all are taking on different things, so think about what type of time commitment you have. And, and two will be, of course, including our stakeholders, our shareholders, our community members. Well, that will be part of it too, is to expect that the search firm will be working with them to obtain what they're looking for in a superintendent. Because that's, that's part of the way in as well, so. There's lots of work to be done and I think that we're getting a good, a good beginning So there's lots of work to be done, and I think that we're getting a good, a good beginning step here, ahead of the game, like you said. So, okay? So everyone's got their homework on that? Okay. Okay, moving along. Finance and Operations, Mr. Barna.
Good evening, everyone. And I'm happy to present you and your board pack. The bids for the Drainer Road main building renovation. These were bids that were out for approximately three weeks, and there were 21 bid categories, all ranging from obviously demo, all the way to HVAC, plumbing, electrical, all the fun stuff. So we received 21, for these 21 bid categories, approximately 48 bids in totality. And so I'm happy to say that the original estimate for all of these separate categories several months ago was $4.2 million, and they came in just under in totality, about $21,000 shy of that rough estimate. So I'm really happy to report that. And I'm really excited for the Virtual Academy, obviously for our LOFT students, and obviously for our Bridges students for this to begin. So this is definitely needed. Does anyone have any questions? In the board pack, again, you have the big, I think there's 114 pages.
Light reading.
It's light reading.
Can I start?
Yes, please.
Mr. Barna, thank you. I wasn't familiar with PCI Daily. I know that when we were doing all the bond work, we had worked with Clark, I think, right?
Construction, right.
Okay, so I just was curious about PCI Daily?
Yes, so PCI Daily is, you know, based in Oak Park, and their forte is literally doing commercial work. And so they have had some very high profile that we would all be recognized, obviously, as turning over office building spaces, as an example. And so this is really their bread and butter. And so they are our at-risk construction manager for this particular project. And what at-risk means is they hold the contracts for all of these individual subcontractors that I just mentioned across approximately 21 bid categories. And so this guaranteed maximum price that you have here, the GMP contract, if there are no change orders initiated by the district, that guaranteed maximum price of a little under 4.2 million is basically the maximum price that, you know, we will pay, okay? Unless we have change orders that we initiate. And so what that does is, that means that PCI Daily, because of their expertise, they will be managing each of those individual contracts, and they hold those contracts with those subcontractors. So that is a big difference of what a at-risk construction manager is.
In addition, I just wanted to add, Sam, that their forte is also remodel and renovation versus build new. And which is, you know, and that's important because we already have the space. It's gonna be how we reconfigure that space to meet our purposes.
I'm sorry, I don't want to go before anybody else.
Something else that had come to mind in the buildings over there, have we done any, like, pre-checking for asbestos anywhere?
So we have. When we originally purchased the property, we actually did inspections on all of the buildings, and there is indeed asbestos within the building that's in the front, which is the retreat house, which is not part of this project, obviously.
The big white one that faces?
That's correct, yeah. That building, I believe, was built either in the late 20s or early 30s, if I'm not mistaken. And so yes, it does indeed have asbestos within that building, so.
But not in the one we're working at?
That is correct.
Yep. This is for the one that we toured. The newer facility was built in the 90s?
It was built in 1998, actually.
Yeah.
And that's the building that we're talking about this evening.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Okay, moving on to the recommendation. Would someone like to read that? Anybody? Go ahead, Mary.
Move to approve the A133 Guaranteed Maximum Price GMP Amendment presented by PCI Daily for the Drainer Facility Project.
Support for that? Erin? Any discussion?
Very exciting time.
Yeah. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
I'm sure LOFT and Bridges and OVR are jumping up and down. Well-deserved move, well-deserved move. Okay, Allison, Safety and School Operations?
School of Choice.
Okay.
So I'm bringing to you tonight the first reading of this for the Schools of Choice window for second semester. So kindergarten through 5th grade will be unlimited seated. That window will open November 7th, and it will close November 21st. For middle school through 9th grade at OHS, unlimited seating. School of Choice enrollment will open January 7th and close January 21st for seated. Oxford Virtual Academy kindergarten through 11th grade for virtual. School of Choice enrollment will open January 7th and close January 21st.
Okay? So no motion this week because we're just reviewing it. So anybody have any questions, though, for her while she's here? No? Okay. Thank you. Unscheduled comment? This is Johnstone, Jill Johnstone, please. Of Oxford. Thank you.
All right. So I first wanted to say how much I really appreciated the flow chart. I think that that's a really great way for people to be able to look at what's happening behind the scenes when there's a threat. I think it'll be very beneficial. I wanted to talk, I wanted to ask a question or talk about, a little bit about the Code of Conduct and how that relates to that flow chart, because it was discussed, things that happen outside of school don't matter in the school, basically. And it says in the Code of Conduct when and where the student, student code of conduct applies. It says, "When a student's conduct at any other time or place has a direct and immediate effect on maintaining order and discipline, or on protecting the safety and welfare of students, school, and district staff." So I am just wondering if we could address how that would apply to this flow chart and making sure that the school's aware of things that are happening outside of school as well, because we are looking at the whole child, and the child might be threatening outside of school, might be not threatening in school, but it still is affecting the entire student body. Also, I'm wondering about safety, any kind of safety plan on students who are returning or who have had repeated issues? Is there some sort of plan for those students so they are safe in school and so that everybody else is safe in school? Also, I want to ask for some supports in place for students who are victims of threats. So even if they're a threat out, if they are threatened outside of school, when they come to school, if the school's aware of that, or parents, I'm sure have told the school, we need to make sure that those students are being, being recognized that they might be feeling a little vulnerable at that time. And also, I ask for empathy and compassion for parents who are concerned about their student safety, because these are our kids, and we all want to work together. I did have the opportunity last time to speak with, I believe it was Mr. Hughes from Fortis, and I thought it, it might be really interesting if Fortis were to come to a school board meeting and maybe present something about how they are chosen. He really had a lot to say to me about how each individual who works here at our school for Fortis is chosen, and I think that would be really helpful for other families to know, because I know it gave me a lot of peace of mind. And finally, the last thing I wanted to ask about is the Safety Committee. I know that there's a Safety Committee. It's referred to quite often, but nobody knows who's on the Safety Committee. And I feel like if, if I had a question and I could go to somebody on the Safety Committee, I might get my answer, rather than asking other people or coming here and not getting an answer. It might be helpful. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you very much. This is Tom Zach, Shirley of Oxford.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask, because I know the, the parent community is concerned about the rumors of sexual assault at the homecoming dance, and I know that nobody has heard anything about what is being done, or what the follow-up is to either the victims or the perpetrators. So I just wanted to bring, I know this isn't a back and forth, but I just want you to know that the parent community and the students who are involved are concerned about what, what the consequences are going to be. Okay?
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Tom Zach. I'm Andrea Jones.
Okay, so Shirley touched a little bit on what I wanted to talk about. Yeah, we are concerned about the rumors regarding the homecoming dance. And so I feel, I know that you can't always give us information, and an investigation is occurring, but there hasn't been any communication about that. And in the past, we've been told, you know, don't go to social media, go directly to us, so we're just kind of asking the same in return, so that it doesn't get blown out of proportion on social media where rumors don't get started, so that we can stick to the facts. So it would be nice to get an update regarding that. I listened to the flow chart, and I do very much appreciate the meeting that took place regarding OK to Say and clarifying some of the information and looking for the loopholes that we had in communication. But it felt a little bit like we were still missing the point of, or you were missing the point of why we were so upset. The point is that we still send our kids to Link Day, and you're saying, okay, it didn't, it wasn't applicable to the school, but that's not what the police report says. The police report says, the subject is L-3519 school incident, and then the exceptional clearance reason, I'm sorry, the verified offense is a 1376 intentional threat to commit act of violence against schools. And then that was being investigated by Officer Barnes. And then when we go to the next page of that report, the person listed as the contact is Deja Beasley, gives the address of the high school. So I don't know how this didn't involve the high school, how this wasn't considered a threat to the school. So, you know, when you say it wasn't applicable, it very clearly was. Again, we're not asking to be in the middle of the investigation. We, we get it. We know that we want this person arrested, that we don't want to interfere with an investigation. Nobody's arguing that point. However, it just feels like you're missing our side of this as to, our kids could have been in danger because there wasn't, it hadn't been deemed not credible at that point. It did involve the school. And again, that's our choice when we choose to send our kids into your care, and so that option was taken away from us. So again, I want you to revisit the communication back and forth, and maybe clarify that a little bit more in your flow chart.
Okay. Thank you, Andrea.
Kit Grabowski. I'm here almost all the time. I'm surprised you haven't figured out my last name is pronounced Grabowski, just like it said, just like it looks.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm here, I started off planning on coming to discuss something totally different, but I got dragged into all rumors from the weekend. I had students that I know and love at this high school that night. I know if they had seen anything, they probably would have absolutely flattened whoever was hurting the dog, the girls. And I would not say a word about it, because that's what they deserve. According to your own Code of Conduct, if sexual assault is reported to the principal, it is supposed to be reported to the police. That student, that perpetrator or perpetrators are supposed to be suspended or expelled. We have not heard one word as to what is going on. All we are getting are multiple rumors. Now, I'll be honest, I'm getting second and third hand because I'm no longer part of the two main groups that all these rumors are flying on. But it was brought to my attention at 6:30 in the morning, Sunday morning. I'm like, why is this coming to me? I was totally, to be honest, I was completely shocked that Deja did not send something out addressing that it was being, it was being looked into, or what had happened to the people that were involved. I was appalled that we weren't told that these kids are not in school, or if they are in school. I thank God I don't have a daughter in the school at the moment. She is middle school age, thankfully, but I can tell you, being a high school parent, I'm pissed. Every one of those parents that has a student in that high school, especially girls, has the right to know that those perpetrators, regardless of the investigation, are not in that school. It should have been addressed. It should have said, this is the allegations that's out there, the people that are involved are no longer, are not in the school at this time, and the investigation is ongoing with the police. We've gotten nothing, nothing from Deja, nothing from our superintendent. That's not excusable. We have the right to know so that we know our kids are safe. Did we not learn anything from nine, from November 30th? We have the right to know when there is a threat to any portion of our student body or any student that is at our school during a school function. My understanding is this, the girl that was involved is not a student in our district. That doesn't matter. Someone from our district did it, or someone who was invited into our district did it. We have the right to know, and you guys need to address it really soon before it gets out of hand.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, I mispronounced your name earlier. It was not intentional. Okay. Moving on to scheduled activities, there's several things I want to point out that we're having our first conversation over coffee. This is an opportunity to create some dialogue. The board, there will be, so are three of you going on this first one? Okay. Raise your hands if you're going. Amanda, Erin, and Mary will be there. Four of us cannot be there, or it's considered what, oh, it's called a quorum, so there'll always just be three or less. Vicky is gonna be there as well, and these are opportunities to have some dialogue, you know, about maybe what you're seeing in the district and things you'd like to see, or curriculum, and questions about things. It is not an interrogation. It is meant for dialogue, conversation, kind conversation. So come with kindness, or do not come. Because it's really meant to create dialogue, so you can't do that without kindness. So we've got a fall break coming up. We've got our fall play in November, lots of good things coming up, and we'll be hoping to hear from Guideposts as well. It's coming around the corner as October brings, brings around. Administrative clarification?
Well, yeah, I think that, yes, there are a few things here. First of all, I want to correct something about the Link Day issue, Andrea. The school did receive the OK to Say tip. Actually, we received, not the OK to Say tip, we received a report from the police that there had been a threatening statement made to two freshman students about something that was going to happen to them at school the next day, which was reference to shooting. That came to us. It came to us at about 2:00 in the morning, 2:00 to 2:30 in the morning. And our team got together immediately, and we spoke to the police, and we got all the details we could from the tip that they received. And they did an investigation, and they met with the boys involved. They got the phone. They got the phone number of the perpetrator who made the call. They called us back and said, "We believe that this threat is not credible, but we want you to know that it occurred." Therefore, we added safety measures. We made sure the high school was swept with the ammo dog. We made sure we had extra security. We made sure that the doors were locked except for one entryway into the school. We brought in additional people. We were busy getting everything ready to be as safe as we could make it, even though we had been told the threat was not credible. And I believe I apologize to you and anyone else I could about the fact that our communication went out later than it should have. We should have put that out between 6:30 and 7:00 in the morning and it got out late. Now, that same night, the same phone was used to call two other people and make two other threats that we were not told about, because the school was never mentioned in those two threats. We didn't know about those two threats until people started telling us that they had been made. When we called the police about those two threats, they said, "These are threats that have nothing to do with the school. We have an ongoing police investigation and that's all we're going to tell you at this time." And while the police officer did call us on the first threat that we felt involved Link Day and we acted on it, we did not know that that very same phone number had been used on these other two threats. So that is what happened that day. And the way the chart is set up, that is likely going to happen again. If the police get a call and we are not referenced, we are likely not going to be told about it. Probably you and the community will find out about it before we do. And that's just about how that's going to flow. So I wanted to clarify that, that point. And then Jill, I know, "Direct and imminent," those are words I have talked to several attorneys about. And the problem is, is when it's an OK to Say tip or it's a tip that goes to the police, the people who make the decision of whether it's a direct and imminent threat to the school are those people. And if they don't bring it to us, we don't weigh in on direct and imminent. I'm just clarifying, okay? I can talk to you after the meeting, okay? But I'm just clarifying now. So, so yes, we are aware of that in our code of conduct. And when the threat comes to us and we're aware of it, that is something that we go to and we use. And we can use that, except when it's a cyber threat made on someone's cell phone from their own home, on their own time, not in our network, and not mentioning the school. Then it has to go through another whole test of whether or not that direct and immediate effect on the school is significant. And there's an actual court test that determines whether or not it's significant. So the cyber thing is a little bit different. Then finally, I want to clarify about the weekend event and let you know where we are with that. And at this point, there was a social media post reporting this alleged groping of girls done by boys. The posting was sent into OK to Say. We became aware of it, actually because someone sent us a screenshot of the posting. The 28 chaperones that were at the dance, all of the students at the dance, nobody was aware that anything had happened at the dance. And OK to, so the administrators began investigating Monday and Tuesday morning, but they began investigating with no idea who, no specifics as to what or when or where, and no specifics as to victims or perpetrators. On Monday morning, a tip came in through OK to Say that actually did name alleged female victims and it named alleged male perpetrators. And so the administration began interviewing each of those victims and perpetrators individually. The alleged victims said very firmly they had never been inappropriately groped or touched. They had no idea why their names were being submitted to us. And several of them were a bit upset that they were being pulled into this. The alleged male perpetrators also said they did not inappropriately grope anyone or touch anyone and some of them and their parents were also kind of concerned that they had been pulled into this. We don't know where those names came from, because of course, the tip was anonymous. We had one group of, and then we interviewed other students who were there. Did you hear? Did you see? This went on for two days. There was a small group of girls who said, "Yeah, we were really being bothered by a group of boys, because they wanted us to dance with them and we didn't want to dance with them, but nobody touched us." That was the closest we came to the groping allegation. Now, if there are people in the community or there are students in the school who have more information than what I just put out there, we'll be glad to continue investigating. We'll treat what information comes to us with respect, with confidentiality. But at this point, there's no action we can take, because we have no evidence that any incident actually occurred. So I wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Final board comments? Anybody? This meeting is adjourned.